Call this meeting, West Burlington City Council to order roll call.
Christie?
Here.
Crowner?
Here.
Hightmeyer?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion with support. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
The motion was support to approve consent agenda items. Bear with me. This is new. One through twelve, which are the minutes from a regular city council meeting on July fifteenth, twenty twenty, approve a liquor license renewal for Target, payment to Scully Tree Service for tree stump removal, payment to Moyn County GIS Commission, payment to Dog Waste Depot, payment to City Burlington for laser shot simulation machine, payment to Net Three Technology, payment to Coalition Center for damage repair, land and water vegetation control, Tapco Guardian Network Solution, and the claims list as percent of the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff report. Stan?
Um, just one thing. I'm gonna be meeting on Monday with the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission to start working on the update to her conference of plan.
Buddy, have anything for Dan?
Mike?
Uh, the base for the traffic light at UPS was being poured today. The poles being shipped on the fourteenth of September, and as soon as it gets here that week, they will be out to stand the pole up and get those lights back on. Uh, Houston project, I've been struggling with Matt trying to get answers, but um, looks like four to five weeks before Daley gets here to start the patchwork, and Norris is six weeks out to put the asphalt, and then they'll go back and cut all the ADA requirement sidewalks in after that, which we're getting laid into that project. I wish it was already going. And then I was contacted by Nate at the school today. They're trying to move furniture out of the school that they don't need and put new furniture in for their distancing, and WW donated two semi trailers to them to load up, so you'll be seeing a trailer parked on along the curb on Ramsey. I told him to go ahead. I would let Jesse know about it too, um, 'cause they can't get it in the lot at the elementary school to turn a semi around, so they're gonna park it there and then they'll bring it out with uh, with their forks and start loading them, and then um, he asked me if I had somewhere I could put them at the sewer plant until next year, so I told him that I didn't think anybody would have an issue with that. Once they load them two trailers, we'll park them down there by our sand and rock pile, and then they'll be locked up down there until next year, then they can have them brought up, depending on what the virus, what's going on, whether they'll need their stuff, so. That's all I got.
Buddy, have anything for Mike?
Uh, two quick things. One, the sidewalk over there on Ramsey looks really good.
We struggled with that because it rained and turned to mush, and then when it dried up, the concrete company was pouring six hundred yards on a road project. I couldn't get concrete, and then when I could get concrete, the plant went down, and all the orders from there went to the south plant with the south plant, and it's been a struggle to guess. That's what the holdup's been. I just have not been able to get any concrete, so.
Well, it looks good. I just wanted to mention, and maybe this is on the Houston project, but there's one on Summer and Houston.
They'll all be redone.
Okay.
That's why I stopped that block where I did, because that's where they measured up to, so yeah. Every, all four sides of the intersection, all the way down Houston, those will all get tore out in ADA and fixed. Yeah, there's several of them down there. It's got some major problems.
There's one there that's a ramp, pretty much. It goes pretty sky high. And then, and then second, uh, I don't know if it got brought to your attention, the issue that my mom, Sheila, actually had with her sewer. Um, not upset about what happened. I just think we ought to look at the procedure of maybe notifying residents that that is happening on their block, uh, maybe with some tips of, you know, close your toilet seats, those kind of things this week, 'cause we're coming through.
When we do our normal seasonal jetting, that would be simple, to notify them, put a newsletter out when we're gonna be out what week doing that. But that, in that case there, was what was collapsed in the sinkhole. We found it, and the main was full of mud and holding sewage back. It was kind of one of them things we had to go do it, and when you gotta do it on like that, most people are at work and you can't get ahold of them anyway, so it's kind of hard. It's kind of a bad deal. And, and the other thing there, in my twenty-four plus years here, it's only happened like five times throughout the city, and there's a couple of them that it's happened more than once, so that person, we do contact. And the only thing, information I can pass on on that is, we've been told by several plumbers that if you have a bad vent, a partially plugged vent, or in an old house, if, if something ain't vented properly, um, 'cause that's where that pressure goes. That air pressure and stuff goes out your vent when we're, when we're jetting, the pressure will go out the vents of the house. If something's not plumbed right, or if there's a partial pluggage, then it's just gonna take the water and shove it right up out of the trap on the sink and the toilets and stuff like that. So.
Well, I, I would say if there's any way on the, you know, if you knew a day or a week ahead of time that that was gonna happen, even putting a little door hanger or something on their door.
We have done that before. We, when they're gonna do like a area.
Yep.
I, we have done like little door.
Usually in the fall, later in the fall, uh, we'll be vacuuming out all the storm intakes, and then we go around do, we got like five or six that are problem sewers that we, we have to jet, so those ones, we'll, we can put door knockers out when we get ready to do that.
Okay. And maybe, I'm not sure if, when Mom stopped up, she got the information about maybe what to tell a plumber, um, so she can get that fixed for next time. Uh, so there might be some information like that, maybe.
I know, I know we've passed that on before. When it's happened, we've let the people know that that could be one of the issues that the plumbers tell us. And I know in a lot of old houses, some stuff never even got a vent hooked up to them, and, and I think that's where the problem is. And to put that in, you'd have to tear out a wall and shovel it out.
I unfortunately see that every day showing houses, but, but I know, you know, Moms haven't had any issues. They've been there forty years.
No, that's when that happened. I have no idea what made that happen at that time, and, and like I said, sometimes the other ones, just out of the blue, and it's a sewer we've been doing many a times, you know? And I don't, I, I, other than the vent, I don't have an answer for it. I don't know.
Well, that's my recommendation, is the process of it, just trying to notify people that it's going on when that's possible.
In a normal jet, too, is you go up and you shoot back down. In that jet, the pipe was half full of mud, so it was up there, let it sit there and eat, and it looked like chocolate milk coming out, going down to our, trying to get all that buildup that's been going on for years out of that main.
It looked the same in her bathrooms.
I'm sorry about that, but I don't know what, I, I said, I don't have an answer of why it does it and when it does it.
Yep. I am not worried about that part, just from our process, if we can find a way to notify people that it's happening. I understand if it's an emergency, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mike? Jess?
Uh, the only thing I have is Sergeant Bogan, Sergeant Nelson went up to the Law Enforcement Academy last week and certified in firearms, so we'll have a couple firearms instructors now, so kind of relieved Sean of his duties for that part, so. He's been very gracious, and we renew his firearms when it comes up to Sean's. It's, it's always great to have another person around to have it, just in case something happens. So, last September, we had both of our firearms move on, so I was kinda, had nobody except for Sean, and he helped us through that time, but we know Sean's got plenty on his plate, so that's all I got.
Buddy, have anything for Jesse? Sean?
Uh, I received the plans while I was off on vacation for Menards and for a project at the Vision Center at Walmart. I'll be getting those reviewed. Um, of course, if you remember, Wa- uh, Menards is the eighty, approximately eighty thousand square foot addition to their current building, the storage building at the nine hundred block, the old store. Um, uh, also was contacted. Dan was initially contacted and forwarded on to me uh, by the Sprinkler Company. They need some flow numbers, which I'll be getting them. Uh, that'll help them out with their calculations on that. I did have numerous letters that I sent out prior to taking off on vacation to various residents and businesses to take care of some nuisance issues. Uh, I was very pleased to either get a phone call from them, um, even though I was on vacation, I never mind, something like that, um, 'cause it was good news that they'd taken care of the issues. Also got some emails from them that they'd taken care of them. Um, I did notice a few that didn't take care of them, and I'm rounding those up. Um, also, I'll be working the alleys again, um, going through there, rounding up some more nuisances. Um, and I've got, uh, if I didn't mention already, two, two business licenses I'm dealing with. One's a food truck, and the other one I have to review to see exactly what it is.
Buddy, have anything for Sean? Kelly, got anything going on?
Not tonight.
Kathy, got anything going on?
Yeah, I wanted to say that there's going to be the first annual car show in Shine presented by Detailing Solutions. This is September fifth from ten to three. It's out at the Penny's South Parking Lot, so we can go out and see a car show that day. And if anybody wants to help them sponsor it, they can get ahold of them too. And that's all I have. Oh, and also, I have been making contacts for our trees project, and we have the Cub Scouts of West Burlington signed up to help us, so we're moving along with that.
Is that, that car show, is that the Labor Day? Is that the Monday on Labor Day?
That's Friday. September fourth is Friday.
It's the fifth. September fifth.
September fifth is Saturday.
Is that a Saturday?
Saturday.
And who do you got to contact?
Um, the people at Detailing Solutions out there at the old Penny's building.
They're in the.
Car lot?
The old car place, the tire center area.
Oh.
In the car bays. Yeah, in the car bays.
Okay. Andy?
Nothing else tonight, sir.
Of course. Reese?
Well, I got several compliments on the disposals, the waste disposals in the park. People said, "Great idea."
Did you pat yourself on the back?
You put them up.
We are finding some bags floating around.
Yeah, Pat Klein one day had, uh, six or eight bags, like somebody was just pulling them out and throwing them, but other than that, we haven't had an issue with them yet.
Well, do you have a, like a little container underneath, or you're just hoping they're gonna either take the bags home or?
Yeah, like you just put it in your car and take it home. No, they're by, they're by the trash cans.
I take our waste.
There's trash cans at each end of the park, where, close to where we got them located, I think. These were empty bags. They weren't used.
Well, they're biodegradable.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Uh, citizens inquiries. Mary's here from the airport.
So, Mary here, it's Southeast Iowa Regional Airport Director, and I just wanted to come and give you an update on our Runway eighteen thirty-six project. So, it began in March on schedule. We had some rain delays. It's probably pushed us back two and a half to three weeks right now, but they are pouring concrete on eighteen thirty-six, the primary runway. So, they will do that in four sections, and they have one and a half sections done now. We're hoping mid next week, they'll have all of the concrete poured on eighteen thirty-six, and then we'll be able to open up eighteen thirty-six, close down the intersection, and then finish the work on the north end, so.
That's where our concrete went.
It must've been where the paving was.
That's where our concrete went, what we needed.
No, so it's going very well. Manats out of Brooklyn, Iowa are the, the primary contractors. They're doing a good job for us. We're happy with it. I just wanted to come and give you guys a little update, since you were part of the airport and contribute to the project, so thanks much for that.
Thank you.
So, Air Choice One, having any good deals going on?
What is that? B R L twenty twenty. So, if you book a ticket with Air Choice One, there's a promotion code, I believe, on that very first page, and if you put in B R L twenty twenty, I believe it's taxes, would be the only thing you're being charged for.
That's good.
That's a good one.
Where can I send you?
I'd like to go to Chicago, but I might not be able to get back.
They're actually changing their schedule first of October, uh, to have an eight o'clock flight out to St. Louis, which, which is something we've really talked about a lot, because then you could catch a connecting flight with Southwest down there being such a big hub, and there's a lot of flights that go out about that nine thirty, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock timeframe, so hopefully they'll be a good change for us.
I'm glad you're still around, too.
But I think I'll park, anyway.
Well, I read the, you know, I read the article in the paper this morning that you were down at the, at the supervisor meeting. Uh, oh, did she retire or didn't she retire?
Still here. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, new business then. I'm number one, is to consider resolution to awarding a contract for the agency road pedestrian crossing, and uh, which Daley Construction was the only bidder for an amount of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents. And Lindsay's here. Got any questions on that?
Dan, I thought when we talked about this a couple days ago, we were sending out for additional quotes.
Well, we got zero last time.
Right.
Um, now we got one, so I don't know if Lindsay has any more to say about that, but.
It's just poor timing in a really busy environment, and it's a very small job, so I don't, I don't know. I think what would make it more attractive is probably attached to their work, but.
I, uh, yeah, college is paying for half of this, and I emailed this bid tab to Kevin, and Kevin's fine with it. He, they're kind of anxious to get going with it, but, you know, they, I mean, I'm sure they'd like to have it before school starts, but probably not happen that soon, but um, they really have been wanting this as soon as possible, and been talking to me quite frequently about where we're at with it, and um, I'm sure they would, well, I know Kevin told me he'd be, he'd be delighted if we'd accept this bid and move forward.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number two, is to consider payment of Jones Contracting for the work completed on the Gear Avenue Trail Project for six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number three, is consider payment to Snyder Associates for engineering services related to the following project. The water tower booster station improvements amount of five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, Des Moines County landfill lift station improvements, amount of nine thousand, one hundred dollars, and the south lift station replacement project, amount of three thousand, nine hundred.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four, is consider approving a three-way, a three-year right-of-way permit for our K two C U S Inc. to install a mowing well in the right-of-way at seven oh seven West Burlington Avenue. As you can see, under the permit application. For three years. And, what is it, a hundred and seventy-five dollar?
A hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five dollar.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
What are we monitoring?
I think that's, they're monitoring something from General Electric discharge or something.
Yeah, if you look at their map, they show two other wells in their parking lot, so this just happens to be the only one in our right-of-way, so that's, obviously, they're tracking something coming from GE property.
Mike, do you know?
I know they've been doing, they got test wells, and they've been checking. I'm assuming that's what it's for.
Is that the one, they're, are they doing that north of there, of the parking lot? I seen somebody working down there the other day.
I don't know if this is.
They might not have been this, this outfit, but don't they, isn't that where they have uh, some cable or coax going through there?
Somewhere over there, yeah. I'm not sure exactly where it's at, but.
So you think it's, it's water they're monitoring there, or they're gonna monitor?
They're, they've been monitoring, taking soil samples, and they got wells where they're taking water samples from groundwater, making sure nothing's leaching out.
Okay. Are we gonna get any kind of reports from that?
I don't know if, I can ask Rod. Rod might know. I don't know if he gets anything back at the sewer plant about that, but. I know he does with what they're discharging, but I don't know about the soil samples. What's that? Did they? They may not be reporting nothing to us then.
I think we should get that information.
I think if they would find something, the EPA would get ahold of us, 'cause they, 'cause we've got letters from other times when, especially on railroad property. Um, we've got one, we've got one right now on, from the, about, their EPA's looking at the old landfill up at the shop site, and the EPA make sure we get noticed when that's happening, but that's, when they really are starting to investigate, this is probably just to check to see the extent of where it might be, and this may come up with nothing for years and.
Or absence thereof, making sure it's absent.
Yeah.
I guess it's a little hard to tell from the information we have, what kind of system they're putting in there. Is this all below ground? Are they knocking down some of those trees to get in there?
It's just a, it's not, it's just a one circular well straight down. They didn't say anything, there's no trees. It's in the right-of-way, so they're not gonna be knocking trees down in that area.
Actually, it's on the west side of the road.
Yeah, it's on the east side of the avenue.
I think it's on the west side.
Over there where the trees are at.
Okay. I guess it looked like there was a tree right on top of that on my map, but it's hard to see on this.
Yeah, usually these are pretty inconspicuous. You don't see them. There's just a lid they take off when you take sample.
They're flushed down. You could mow over them and everything else. You, you wouldn't even see this. They had lots of them up here on Prairie before we tore that trailer court down and the old gas station and all that, before we built, redid Prairie. There was several wells in there for years, too, testing all that before we started that project. They're just flushed it to ground. There still may be one right at the end, be on the east side of Cottage Grove or not pleasant. There still may be a cap one right there where they were taking their last samples even. You don't, they don't stick up, or you can't, you don't even see them.
Are we saying then that they are monitoring the water? Is that what it is, or we don't know for sure?
I don't know if it's, I don't know.
Just doing like a soil sample. They'll pull up the.
They'll pull up the soil and water, groundwater, have it just tested, make sure.
Possibly has leaked, or there isn't anything leaking that's reaching those, those different wells, but this is the, the only one they need a permit for, because it's the only one in the right-of-way.
I don't know, but I'm sure they have them on the north side, too, down along where all their trees and the freeway is. I'm sure they got them all the way around there, but this is the only one that's over in our right-of-way.
And if I'm reading this right, this is a, so this is across the street, not even next to theirs. This is.
Yep.
Okay. All right, it's a little hard to search on, on what I'm scrolling through here. It's.
Do you have a roll call yet?
It's the one that's highlighted in yellow, Andy, on the.
Yeah, it's highlighted, but it's across the street from.
Right.
Do a roll call?
I don't, I just have a motion. Ready? Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five, is consider resolution adding Justin Prior to the fire department.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Um, how long, how long have you been off the department, Charlie?
Three years.
Three years?
He'll have to do the, the medical test, the everything.
He'll come on as a newbie again, or will?
Newbie.
Or will they?
He's got gear. He was issued his gear the same year I was. I think that was two thousand and twelve. He's got a couple years left on his gear. Everything's still there. But yeah, he'll have that lovely little orange shield for a while that says probationary and everything. He'll have to work his way up again.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Okay. I'm number six, is to consider request from Frank Newberg to extend his coverage of family health insurance for additional three months. Is Frank on the phone yet?
I'm here. Mom, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. Well, as like my momma stated, um, I was, we went out to retirement. I thought it would be two years before Medicaid kicked in on my disability. Um, it ends up from the first date that I get, well, social security money, 'cause you have to go five months. It wasn't when I was approved. It was when I received my first money. And although the contract stated two years, we had and the intent that it was supposed to take care of me until Medicaid kicked in, and it ends up being three months short. I was on long-term sick time. I still had some left. I probably should've ran that out before if I would've known.
I just lost you.
It was my mistake on that, and uh, I'm, I'm asking the council, 'cause the financial, this probably been the most stressful day of my life, but just since my, I went down, um, September fifth, twenty fourteen, is paralyzed, I've had to re-change my house. I've had to change my whole life around and get into a lot of financial, and I, I guess I'm just asking for the council if they would just give me the three months that sure helped me out financially. If they decide not, then I guess, I don't know, I guess I'll have to try to borrow on any equity that I have on my house. Um, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. Um, I mean, I guess I leave it up to you and see what you think of it. I know Dan doesn't support it, but he, um, but I, I don't know. I'm, I guess I'm just asking for a long, the twenty-eight years and all the time that I put in, that maybe you would just grant me the three months based on what I've done in the past. I know there's a lot of new council people here, um, that doesn't know what I did throughout all the years, but I stayed with West Burlington. It was home. I moved here from Burlington, and really became part of the community that kept me here. Um, even the community, when I went down, the support I had was fantastic from the residents. Um, so, this is my home, and I guess that was a big mistake I made. I guess I throw myself at your mercy.
Well, has anybody had any questions?
I just wanted to say that normally I would agree with Dan that renegotiating a contracted agreement is not something I would want to do, but there's exceptions to everything, and I feel like this is an exception, so I think I would support this.
Thank you so much.
I agree with Kathy. This is not an issue that I think should really be something we have to deal with, but I go back to how the contract was written and what the intent was, and so I guess I have to ask, you know, Therese and Dan, I'm not sure if, if you two were here during that, was the intent that this, go to that date when this was signed?
I'm not sure what the intent was. The contract was pretty clear. It was the shortest of the, that list of, that list of things. Either he got Medicaid or two years or, but I mean, we did, we were all acting on the assumption that it was gonna be two years, and not two years plus three months. I mean, I guess I can't say what the intention of the old council was on whether that, you know, but they did, we did negotiate that twenty-four months in there.
I know I saw this when I read through it the other day, but what's the total cost to the city?
At least, at least thirty-six hundred. Um, if, if, uh, he hasn't used his wellmark deductible up yet, it could be some more, some more costs that go into our partial self-funding. We have no way of knowing where we're at with that, but.
so now I have all my, all the stuff for the urostomy is covered, so I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm there at that, so it'd be $3,600.
You're, you're at your deductible, but the city cup picks up the difference between that and the Wellmark deductible, and I would guess you'd be pretty close, just because I know that you have a lot of expenses, so I wouldn't think it'd be more than that, but I have no way to give council an actual number, because we can't see that number.
Okay, as far as I can see, I'm just right about there.
Well, Frank, you know, we go back a hundred years.
Oh, yes.
And I'm still older than you, though.
I don't know. I can't be. You look a lot younger.
Yeah.
Of course, a lot younger.
By, by a wee bit. Anyway, we've chatted, and I know this was the intent, that we were going to try to help you get through it until that, to that point, and it's unfortunate that you didn't